Meeting on Thursday, February the 7th, 2013 in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, at 6:00 PM. For the purpose of reviewing that portion of February 11th, 2013, school board agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. The board will hear the following reports, but before we go into that, let me recognize the CFTV student crew tonight, and they are from Langham Creek High School. The students are McKenna Buchanan, Nick Hernandez, Travis Stewart, Justin Higera, Ryland Billings, and their faculty advisor is Brandy Milson. Also tonight, representing our community leadership committee, is Chuck Brandeman and Leslie Martone. They're sitting out here, and you can barely see them from all the people here. The reports are, for A, the administration will provide an oral report on GEM Gap Elimination Measures Grant. That will be on Monday evening. B, the administration will provide an oral report on the results of the 2012 STAR 3 through 8 assessments. That will also be on Monday. The administration will provide an oral report on the athletic department. That will be on Monday. Tonight, the board will receive an oral report on the 83rd legislative session and on school finance ruling. This evening, we will be listening to the school finance ruling. On Monday, we will be listening to the 83rd legislative session. Tonight, the presenter are Dr. Mark Henry, Teresa Hall, and Stuart Snow. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President, Board of Trustees. Ms. Hall and Mr. Snow and I were fortunate enough to be in the courtroom last week when Judge Dietz ruled on the school finance lawsuit that was brought forward by over 600 school districts. And if it's okay with y'all, Mr. Snow is going to kind of provide us a review of his ruling.
Great. Mr. Snow?
Thank you, President Kovey, members of the board, and Dr. Henry. As Dr. Henry mentioned, we were privileged to be in the courtroom on Monday afternoon to hear the judge's ruling on the lawsuit. And obviously, we are very pleased with the outcome of that lawsuit. That lawsuit included over 600 school districts throughout the state of Texas and with four plaintiff groups, two intervenor groups, and obviously, the state as defendant. So the lawsuit included seven parties and well over, probably well over 20 attorneys representing each of those plaintiff groups. Over 11,000 exhibits were submitted into evidence during the trial. The trial itself lasted 44 days, and it spanned a period of 105 days. So obviously, a very significant lawsuit, a very significant amount of time that was involved in that in terms of the preparation and in terms of actually the number of days in trial. That lawsuit was filed in the Travis County in Austin, and the presiding judge was John Dietz, who is the, one of the Travis County District Judges, and it was tried in his court and District Court in Austin. By the way, Judge Dietz is the presiding judge, or was the presiding judge, in the lawsuit in 2005 styled West Orange Cove, in which he also ruled in favor of the plaintiff groups at that time regarding the school finance situation. Each group filed separate lawsuits, and so we had a lawsuit that was filed by the four plaintiff groups and lawsuits that were filed by the intervenors. But Judge Dietz, for trial, consolidated all of those lawsuits, and so he heard all of those lawsuits at one time during the same trial. Now, the foundation of the lawsuit is contained in the Texas Constitution of 1876 under Articles 7 and Article 8. And I would like to read those because I think it's important that we get, we understand the basis for which we filed our petition with the court. Article 7, Section 1 states, "A general diffusion of knowledge being essential to the preservation of the liberties and rights of the people, it shall be the duty of the legislature of the state to establish and make suitable provision for the support and maintenance of an efficient system of public free schools." And then Article 8, Section 1E states, "No state ad valorem taxes shall be levied upon any property within the state." So each of the lawsuits that were filed by each of those plaintiff groups and intervenors, their petitions, essentially, the claims that they made in their petitions were different in form and with respect to the remedies that they were seeking from the lawsuit. However, the major positions that they were taking and the claims that they were making were very similar in respect to what they were asking for as far as remedy. And so there are four claims that you can group, all of those claims to be in the areas of adequacy, equity, suitable provision, and state property tax. Now, the plaintiff group that we were included with is actually styled the Fort Ben ISD, filed our petition with the court, and we were represented by Thompson and Horton. And in our petition to the court, we claimed three major areas. Adequacy, we had an adequacy claim, we had an efficiency claim, and we had a state property tax claim. And so we contended on the adequacy claim, we contended that the current school finance system violates Article 7, Section 1 in that it is inadequate and fails to provide for the general diffusion of knowledge as stated in Article 7, Section 1 that I just read. In the efficiency claim that we filed as part of our petition, we said that we believe that the current school finance system violates Article 7, Section 1 in that it is inefficient, it's unsuitable, and it arbitrarily funds school districts at different levels below the constitutionally required level to provide a general diffusion of knowledge. Now, the general diffusion of knowledge is, I guess, for me, it's a little bit ambiguous, but for Judge Dietz, I believe that he has defined that as being college-ready or college or career-ready. So if we provide an education to our students that makes them college or career-ready, then we've satisfied the general diffusion of knowledge provision. Our property tax claim, in our petition, we stated that we believe that the current school finance system violates Article 8, Section 1E in that it prevents districts from exercising meaningful discretion in setting our tax rate. And that the tax rates throughout the state are currently, they effectively serve as both a floor and a ceiling. A floor meaning that school districts cannot lower their tax rates any further without compromising their ability to meet the state standards and the requirements to provide a general diffusion of knowledge. And then a ceiling in that because either school districts are legally or practically unable to raise their rates any further. And I'll talk about that further in just a minute. But Judge Dietz's ruling, he actually ruled separately by party, and he addressed each party's claims individually in his ruling. And so for our lawsuit and the claims that we made in our petition, as to our adequacy claim, the judge declared that the current school, the current system of school finance did violate Article 7, Section 1 of the Texas Constitution, and that, as he put it in his ruling, that it is inadequate, unsuitable, and it prevents school districts from accomplishing the general diffusion of knowledge. And this means that, one, there are not enough funds in the system, and that the Constitution requires that the system be structured and operated and funded to accomplish its purpose. As to our efficiency claim, the current school finance system violates Article 7, Section 1 as well of the Texas Constitution in that, according to Judge Dietz, it is inefficient, inequitable, unsuitable, and it arbitrarily funds districts at different levels below the constitutionally required level of general diffusion of knowledge. And so the inefficiency means that the children who live both in rich districts and those children that live in poor districts must be afforded a substantially equal opportunity to have access to educational funds. And the Texas Supreme Court gave an example for the term arbitrary in its ruling in 2005 with the West Orange Cove lawsuit. The example that the Supreme Court gave at that time is if the legislature defines the goals for accomplishing the constitutionally required general diffusion of knowledge and then provides insufficient funds or insufficient means to achieve those goals, then that system is arbitrary, and it arbitrarily funds those districts differently. As to our state property tax claim, Judge Dietz declared that the current system of school finance violates, does violate, Article 8, Section 1E in that the current system does prevent districts from exercising meaningful discretion in setting their tax rates and thereby creating a statewide ad valorem tax. Now, as I mentioned, the independent school districts must have meaningful discretion in the operations and making decisions of its operations, and it must have meaningful discretion in setting its tax rate. And so when a tax is levied by a school district, and I talk about the floor and the ceiling, when a tax levy is by a school district in which the state has either direct or indirect control or has any influence on that tax rate or reliance on that tax rate, then it does become a state ad valorem tax and therefore being unconstitutional. So what's next as we look to the future in terms of what's going to happen? Judge Dietz did mention on Monday that he will be preparing his official omnibus order and also the findings of facts and the conclusions of law within the next four to six weeks, which would put us about mid-March for that. And then we would expect that the state would appeal or make their appeal immediately after or soon enough thereafter, that would be just within a few weeks or within the month. So we're expecting the state to file their appeal in March or April to either, they have an option to either the Court of Appeals, or they may file their appeal directly with the Supreme Court. Now, we understand in talking with our lawyers that if the state does decide to appeal to the Court of Appeals, then that would add about one year to this process because depending upon what happens there at the Court of Appeals, then it could go, then it would have to go back or go on to the Supreme Court. So our hope is that the state would make their appeal directly to the Supreme Court at that time. And if they do, then we would expect a ruling by the Supreme Court during the spring of 2014, so about one year from now.
Just one thing I would like to add. I would hope that the state would not appeal it to the Supreme Court and just fix it. So I just wanted to add that.
That would be nice. I think it's doubtful, but the state does have some options. The current legislature does have options that they can take action on to help relieve this school funding situation. The current 83rd session that's in session now, the legislature has appropriated in the appropriations bill about $5.5 billion less than the revenue estimate that was provided by the state comptroller. And of that $5.5 billion, about $3.7 billion is under the legislative spending cap. So they do have some money if they choose to be able to do some things for K through 12 public education. They could restore some of the funds that were cut during the last legislative session through the appropriations process, through appropriations bill. And those are some of the things that we would like to communicate with our legislators. And the other thing that they could do, their other option obviously, would be to wait until the Supreme Court rules on the lawsuit if it does go to the Supreme Court. So if the appeal is made directly to the Supreme Court and if the ruling does come out of the Supreme Court in the spring of 2014, then where does that put us in terms of us being Cyfair School District? Where does that put us in terms of being able to affect any changes that the legislature might make to remedy the school finance situation? Once the Supreme Court does make a ruling then, and if they rule in favor of the plaintiff groups, then they will direct the legislature to go back into session at some point in time to be able to make changes to the system to, obviously, with the intent that system passed constitutional muster. But if the Supreme Court does rule in the springtime of '14, then they could call a special session immediately after that in the spring of 2014. And if they do, effectively, that special session would have to end prior to the end of June for Cyfair to be able to affect any changes that the legislature makes in their budget for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. If they happen to call a special session in the summer of 2014, then in order for us to affect any changes that the legislature might make, those changes would have to wait until the 2015-16 budget year or fiscal year unless we were able to make some changes or amendments in the 2014-15 budget. And then if the legislature does decide to wait until the 84th legislative session in January of 2015, then obviously, Cyfair would have to wait and affect those changes in its budget and reflect those changes in the budget for the 2015-2016 year. So, and one of the things that we want to communicate to our legislators right now obviously is to not to wait until that time, but really to start now to begin the studies to determine how best to remedy the finance system now. And, you know, they have some time before the Supreme Court makes its ruling if it gets to that point, but at least they'll be ahead of the game and know, you know, what to do in terms of making those changes to the finance system. But with that, I want to leave you with a quote, and this is something that, this is a quote by Judge John Dietz. He made this statement at the conclusion of the West Orange Cove lawsuit in 2005, and he made the same statement at the conclusion of this lawsuit on Monday afternoon. And he says, "Education costs money. Ignorance costs more money." I thought that was very appropriate and very poignant. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board, anyone have questions? Mr. Jackson?
Would you go back over the judge's ruling as it related to the intervenor's request?
Yeah, I did not mention the judge's ruling on the intervenors in my report to you, but what I recall is that the judge ruled that their claims, and one of the intervenors, let me back up. One of the intervenor groups was seeking remedy for reducing the cap on the number of charter schools, and they also had an efficiency claim in their petition. And then the other intervenor group was a charter school that was seeking state facilities funding. The judge actually did not rule for those intervenors. In fact, he said that he didn't find any basis for their claims to be unconstitutional and that those claims can be remedied by policy decisions made by the legislature. So in effect, they were losers in this lawsuit.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mr. President. That was a great presentation, Stuart. Real quick, are the legal fees associated with this lawsuit made up for if it's successful?
You know, I don't recall how that is going to be handled. I think that we were asking for relief of legal fees by the state, but I would have to check and make sure of that.
I'd like to know.
Each of the districts that we're party to, at least our plaintiff group, put up enough money to be able to continue with that, begin and continue with the lawsuit, and that those legal fees were determined at a certain amount based upon the number of students that we have in enrollment.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman, what I would share is, as the prevailing party, should we continue to prevail throughout the judicial system, we would be entitled, as Stuart said, we pled that relief. And then in 2005, as you all may be aware, those that were here, we did eventually have our attorney's fees refunded to us. So our hope and our attorney's hope is that that same thing will happen here. Now, it won't be anytime soon, but I think in 2005, we finally got the check. I think you were with us by then, Stuart, so it may have been like 2008.
It was 2008, yes.
Yeah, so it took three years, but eventually, we did get the money.
I do think it's important to recover our legal fees for doing the right thing for our kids, and when you guys have the specifics associated with it, just get back with me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jackson?
Just a little follow-up. I presume that management will be taking the various different timing scenarios into effect and do some pro forma financial statements on the management side. I don't know that the board needs to see those, but we just need to know that y'all are aware, as you said, that relief may not be coming for years and that y'all discuss internally all the what-ifs.
Well, I typically do a five-year budget projection of projecting revenues and expenditures. And of course, that's always done on a current law basis. And so in this particular case, it's going to be very difficult to actually do performas because we don't know what the, one, we don't know what the Supreme Court's going to say, and two, if the Supreme Court does direct the legislature to make those changes, we have no idea what those are going to make, what they're going to be. But once that happens, obviously, and we're going to be very, stay very close to that legislative process to know, you know, what they're thinking, the, you know, the changes that they're promoting. And so we would be able to, you know, as the session goes along, be able to play what-if games, I guess, if you will, to determine what the impact to the district would be.
Well, good. So basically, y'all do have plans and you will continue to be strategic as this continues to play out, hopefully, in our favor.
It makes it a little bit more dicey, you know, when something, when a situation like this happens, but we continue to do, you know, the best we can and absolutely wanting to make sure that we're looking down the road and knowing what's ahead of us and being able to provide in our budget for those unexpected happenings.
Okay. Stuart, just a couple of things. Number one, we, of course, pretty much assume that the federal government's going to go ahead and implement sequestration, so we know that there'll probably be some cuts along that line. I think last month, you told us to be about $1.4 million is how it would adversely affect us, based on, was that based on 5.1% that they were going to reduce?
It was based on a little over 8%, I believe, and I think, if I recall, it was about $2.5 million.
$2.5 million, but they were also, they're talking about it not being quite the 8%, but dropping it to 5, 5.1, I think. So anyway, we've got an idea of what that is.
We're making provisions for that as well as we enter the budget process. In fact, we've already begun the budget process for 2014-15, or is it 13-14? But we're going to make sure that we have provisions for that, and we know we can see that coming down the road.
I guess my, and the next question, and I'm going to be pulling on your memory base here, but the 2005, whenever that happened, how long did it take the legislature to come up with a new funding formula?
Well, if I recall, again, I believe it took the Supreme Court, once it was submitted to the Supreme Court and it was appealed, it took the Supreme Court about a year to make their ruling. And then after that, the legislature met, I believe, if I recall, three special sessions in order to affect the changes that we see now. Actually, most of those changes are still in effect that they implemented through House Bill 1.
That was my next question. We are pretty much still under that formula right now and will be until something changes, right?
We're kind of under that formula as well as, and in 2009, the legislature modified the school finance system somewhat through House Bill 3646 and added an additional layer, I guess, if you will, of complexity to the school finance system. And so we have a combination of, because I guess the remnants of House Bill 1 in 2005 as well as 3646, as well as the most recent Senate Bill 1 in, what, 2011?
Okay. So it's exciting that we were ruled in favor, but we really can't jump up and down right now yet.
You know, I talked with a group this morning about this, and I kind of described it as, you know, this was a major victory for us and the students, but we've got a long way to go. There was a lot of work to do, and I kind of described it as, we just finished the first quarter of a long four-quarter football game, and so there's quite a bit more to do.
And as go along with that, it's great for the community to listen in and know what's happening so that they can help us with the legislature, just an FYI. Thank you, Stuart. Appreciate it. E, the administration will provide a written report on 2013 summer school dates for elementary, middle- middle school, and high school. Presenter is Mary Jodlosky. Mary?
It's a written report.
We don't, I'm sorry. No presentation. Mary, you don't have to get up. Does anybody have any questions as far as the summer school setup? And you got that in your packet. Everybody okay with that? Thank you. Moving along, the board will now review and discuss the following action items. 5A, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and are authorizing purchase orders for the following items. Art paper. 2, athletic and physical education equipment supplies. 3, cafeteria tables. 4, fire extinguisher and safety products inspection and maintenance, renewal year 2 of 3. 5, floor care, machine replacement parts, renewal year 2 of 3. 6, instructional materials and supplies. 7, police department radios. 8, scientific supplies and instructional materials. 9, special education supplies and equipment. 10, student handbook/teacher planner book. So anyone have any questions about that? Anybody? Mr. Jackson?
This question would either be for Chief Bragg or for Matt. And it comes from having lunch with some folks at, on the Jersey Village City Council. For the police department radios that we are acquiring, are we required to be compliant with some of the additional security provisions that were promulgated at a federal level that impacted city police departments? Are we exempt from that? And that has to do with the homeland security provision.
Correct. These radios are additional radios. They are P-25 homeland security compliant, and they are compatible with the City of Houston digital radio system that we are going on to. And so what this does for us is replace the radios that are in those, in the white fleet cars. We've had a departure of security officers, a little quicker than planned, so we're replacing those with police officers. That'll replace the radios in those vehicles, and those 10 of those handhelds will be deployed to those remaining security officers that we have. They will all be compliant, be able to talk to each other, as well as all the agencies around us. We have radio operability MOUs in place with all the agencies around us.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm not surprised, as always, the planning in this district is always forthright and looking forward. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? I've got one, and I'm not sure to direct it to, and it's on the teacher planner book. Maybe, is that Dr. Macias? Dr. Macias is, are, it seems like we're doing more and more on the computer. So is this a physical planner book, or is this on the computer? Are you the one I need to ask the question to?
Matt.
Matt. There you are. Hi, Matt.
I do not have that answer.
That's a good cover, though, Linda. I saw you going for the microphone.
It's a physical planner book.
It is a physical planner.
It's not on the computer.
So do we think we're eventually going to the computer on something like this, or is this just not?
This is for the students, that they take home with them, and they write their homework down. So I don't know.
I think.
Sorry. Maybe I'm confused.
I think over the microphone.
This is, this is more for, this is for the students. This is where they would write their assignments, or teachers might give input, and it goes home on a regular basis.
Okay. All right. All right.
Well, as the mother of an elementary student, they're like graphic planners, you know, where the kids, the teacher will write, and they, you know, they write them down. They're very helpful for the kids.
Okay, great. Simple question. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
You're a better answer.
Christine, you've got something?
Matt, it's back about the planners. But I know that when I have a student who needs a planner at a school, I might pay $5 for it. So is that a reduced cost because we're paying a certain amount, or that's what I'm, okay.
You order them in bulk, so that you only have to pay.
Yeah. Okay.
Marnie's absolutely right. We order them in bulk, so there's a discount.
Well, I thought about that. I said, oh, wait, I have paid for that.
Are there any other questions for Linda and Marnie?
No, Matt, but if you'll just stay there, we'll come up with one here in a minute.
No problem.
Oh, you can go sit down. I'm just kidding. Okay. The board will consider approving the budget amendments for period of October 1st, 2012, through December 31st, 2012. No presentations, questions only. Do we have questions? Anyone? 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 Okay, moving along. The board will consider approving on second reading additions, deletions, or revision to district policies. CFB local accounting inventories revised. 2, FNG local student rights and responsibilities, student and parent complaints and grievances revised. Anyone have any questions about that? Christine?
And I'm still, because I am still a rather newbie board member. When we make a change to something like this, and I know most of the time it's just wordage, but about, say, the student rights and responsibilities, when do we inform the parents of that change? Is it in the next year's student handbook? Is that when they receive it, or if there's?
It depends on what the policy is. We do have a communication plan, obviously, for various stakeholders, beginning with the principals and others on campus. With the case you're talking about, yes, that would be in the student handbook for the upcoming school year, to bring that to their attention.
Okay. And just, and just general, you know, that I want to make sure that the parents are aware of the rules, regulations, how to file a grievance, what their rights are. And so just if we're making changes, I was wondering when they go through, but in the new handbook would be?
Right. And with this example, as you said, it's just minor changes, wording, changing the order of the wording, and clarifying what policy should be adhered to with the complaint. So it, I don't think that there's going to be a need for mass communication with this change, but in general, yes, that would follow up with handbook and other means of getting the word out to the campuses and thus to the parents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, the board will consider approving tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Any questions on this item? Moving along, the board will consider approving minutes of January 17th, 2013 special call meeting. Any questions on this one? Moving along, the board will consider approving the minutes of the January 22nd, 2013 regular meeting. Any questions on this? Moving along to the non-consent items. 6A, the board will consider approving a resolution to suspend portions of EIA local for the 2012-2013 school year only. We have a very brief presentation from Dr. Macias and Mary Jodlosky. Is that true?
Or maybe Matt.
Or Matt.
No, not Matt.
We don't have a presentation, or we do?
Good question, sir.
Does anyone have a question?
Linda, if you don't mind, would you just kind of give a quick overview for the public of what that change is?
Mr. Covey, you may, you may remember that part of the, with part of the state assessment system for the end-of-course exams, the tests were supposed to count as 15% of the student's grade, their final grade. And so last year, and so we had, we had to come before you and change the policy. And then at, last year, about this time, the commissioner suspended that 15%. And so instead of coming back and revising our policy, because we didn't really know what was going to happen the following year, or even the following year, we came to just let you know that we needed a postponement, and there needed to be a, just a vote to make sure that we could, we could provide that postponement. And so that's the same thing that we're coming to again this year. The commissioner has again postponed that 15%. And we hope it's going to go away completely, but right now, it's again, it's been again postponed.
Okay. And I would, I would add to that, and Teresa might have been coming with this, I believe that's already been fast-tracked through the Senate. They've already approved the elimination of that 15%.
It has, I think, Senate Bill 135. I think it's Senator Patrick's bill. It actually passed unanimously in the Senate and is headed to the House. So I think we'll get that elimination permanently, so.
Okay. Any questions?
If you don't mind, can I go back to B real quick?
Sure.
Stuart, did you just give, I mean, I am a newbie. Can you just give us a quick summary of the process associated with budget amendments and how they impact the bottom line?
Certainly. Each quarter, we look at the budget, we amend the budget if it's appropriate, and we amend it for any additional revenue that we have realized during that quarter. We amend the budget for any additional positions, expenditures related to any additional positions that are a result of increases in enrollment that we did not anticipate when we adopted the budget originally. Any emergency needs, any curriculum and instructional needs, any expenditures related to those. We quite often make transfers between budgets, I mean, between functions and other needs. Generally, what we look at also is, we look at the salaries or the payroll by function and project out what that payroll is going to be by function and by department, by school, based upon our budgets. We project that out for the remainder of the year. And if we see that an area is, we have some additional funds in an area that we can use to transfer to another area that may be lacking in funds for payroll, we do that. So we do this on a quarterly basis, and then we will bring to you for your approval each quarter of those budget adjustments to amend the budget. Now, as you probably know, the budget is adopted based on a function level. And so any changes that we make, or amendments that we make on a function level, you all are required to approve. We can make changes by object and that sort of thing throughout the budget, but it's at the function level that the Board of Trustees makes or adopts the budget. And so any changes within function requires board approval. This particular budget amendment report that we provided to you is for the second quarter of the, for the month ended December 31st, 2012. And the report shows that we have an additional amount of revenue that we're adding to the budget of about $442,000. We don't have any adjustments for that quarter related to expenditures. So if everything stays the same throughout the course of the year, and we make no other adjustments in revenues or expenditures, then that $442,000 would be an increase to the fund balance, basically. So, does that answer your question?
That was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. You okay? Everybody's okay with that? Okay. Now, we're back to the resolution to suspend the portion of, I'm sorry, are we there? No.
That's what we just covered.
Yeah. But was everybody okay for moving that to consent? Are we okay with that?
And Bob, I'd like to ask.
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
And I will probably repeat the same question on Monday. I attended a meeting this morning, and there was concern evidenced by an engineer who I have high regard for, that by removal of this 15% that somehow we're dumbing down the system and we're sacrificing kids striving to make better grades. But that's not really the case at all, is it?
No, sir, it's not.
Could you elaborate?
Well, our students have finals that they take for the course. They have to, they, there's a sequence of courses they have to take to be able to proceed with their, with their high school coursework. And so our courses have been and will continue to be rigorous, rigorous for our students.
Thank you. Any other questions? We can move that to consent? Y'all all right with that? Thank you, Donna. We're moving to consent. The board will consider granting an extension to Metropolitan Baptist Church for the rental of Hopper Middle School per GKD local. Do we have any questions on that? Anyone? Is it okay if we move that to consent? All right, moving to consent, Donna. The board will consider approving the CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC blanket utility easement to provide electrical service for Pope Elementary School Number 53. This item may be discussed in closed session. Do we need to have a closed session on this item? No. Can we move this to consent? Everybody's all right with that? Thank you. D, the board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to give notice to Joe DiAlba that it is proposed that his employment with the district under a multi-term contract be discharged. It is further recommended that president of the board notify the assistant principal of the proposed action to discharge his employment pursuant to 21.211 of the Texas Education Code. This item may be discussed in closed session, and we will have a closed session. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make the motion, Susan.
Thank you.
And before we move on that, do we have paperwork, so we can record the time?
I've got it right here.
Very good.
Okay. So I have a motion, and a second by Kevin. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're going into closed session. Thank y'all for being here. You don't have to stay unless you just are dying to stay. There are no other items. There's no other items after this one. But we will be coming back out.